Everyone, if I can have your attention, we'll get our meeting called to order. It's good to see all of you on this very chilly Tuesday afternoon. Thank you for accommodating us moving our city council meeting to Tuesday since yesterday was Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and we hope that you were able to reflect on the important works of Dr. King when you had your day to yourself yesterday and with your family. But we thank you for being here this evening. We do have agendas that are on the podium if anyone would like to grab one and follow along with us. I will remind you that this is the, what I call, the regular council meeting on the third Monday normally, but today Tuesday. The items that we'll be discussing and voting on this evening, we have discussed at our workshop, so I don't want anyone to be surprised with the speed with which things move. We have discussed these items in our workshop a couple of weeks ago and have had time to investigate and ask questions and do what we need to do to come to these decisions we'll make this evening. So we do have the agenda before us, gentlemen. We're called to order, and I have asked our fire chief, Chief Bobby Bennett, to please give it some, let me try that again, an invocation and offer our pledge of allegiance. Please, Bobby.
All right, let's pray. Father God, thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us. Lord, I just ask for your blessings as we go through this storm. Lord, I just ask that you protect everyone in its path, all the people, the pets, the families, the homeless people, Lord, of what they're going to do, and just ask for your blessings upon them tonight as they try to live through this storm that we're not used to. God, I know everything's in your hands and everything happens for a reason, and we just pray to you that you will just completely surround them with your blessings and comfort them. Lord, I pray for the council tonight as they make the decisions that may change the lives of many or change the citizens' life. Lord, I just ask that you just put the wisdom upon them that they need to make the decisions that's for the betterment of our community, and, Lord, I know they will. Lord, I just, I just ask you for the grace and the love that you give us, and we're so thankful for you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. You will please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rojo. We appreciate that prayer and appreciate what you do for this community. All right, gentlemen, you have the agenda before you that Jessica sends out to us, so you've had a few minutes to look over that, so I will take a motion concerning approval or any changes on that agenda.
With the approval.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, so that does carry. And then also in your packet, we have minutes from our December 16th, 2024 meeting and our July the 6th, 2025 meeting, so you've had a chance to review those. So I'll take a motion concerning those sets of minutes.
Moved to approve.
All right, thank you, sir. Second. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, so that does carry. All right, we do have our public comment now. If there's anyone that would like to address the council, we have a sign-in sheet. If you'd like to speak, you're certainly welcome to. We encourage interaction. Jessica, is there anyone who's asked to speak or anything? What's that?
I think it was, but it wasn't.
Okay, okay, so nobody needs to speak, so we're good. All right, so moving along, gentlemen, you have before you the consent agenda, and as you know, these items we can take together. There are five items, or we can take them individually, or if you have any questions or any further explanation before voting, we can offer those up to our interim city manager, Larry Lawrence. So I'll take a motion concerning that consent agenda.
May I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, all items together?
Okay, thank you. And we have a second. All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion on those consent agenda items? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and those all do carry, so thank you. Under new business, we have, the first item is to consider a proposed increase to curbside pickup as presented by Ryland Environmental. And Aaron Sawal with Ryland was at our previous meeting and then at our last meeting at our workshop meeting to answer any questions, and so that proposal is in your packet. We've been looking at this for some time, so Larry, is there any new information we need to consider? I didn't see anything in the packet.
No, I guess we just need to decide if we want to proceed with an additional $3.50 a month for homeowners for doubling the trash, curbside pickup.
Uh huh.
Of course, they want an additional five-year commitment because they have to buy an additional truck and hire additional employees.
Sure.
Plus, they want to add an inflationary annual increase with that.
Okay.
Mayor, one thing, Larry just mentioned the inflationary increase. They referenced CPI.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's numerous indexes under the CPI.
Sure.
So what I would suggest would be the index for all urban consumers.
Okay.
Which is customarily used in contracts when you have this type of inflationary increase. So is it called the CPIU?
Gotcha.
So just as clarification.
Okay. Do we have any other contracts that are tied to CPI that have automatic increases like that that you know of off the top of your head?
Mayor, not that I can think of off the top of my head.
Okay. Let me ask this, and Aaron's not here. I don't see him to ask this question. Is the proposal that's presented an absolute proposal, or is it something that we could say, well, we won't do this, but we'll do that and take that back to them for consideration? Is this negotiation?
We can do that.
Okay. Okay, so that would be an option too, if there's any part.
Entertain our offer.
Okay, so it's still negotiable. This is not just a final take it or leave it type of.
I would think so, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, when I looked at the packet, it said the five-year contract was required. I believe it said required.
Okay, no matter what.
So I think that's a non-negotiable.
Gotcha, okay. All right, I've asked all my questions. Does anyone have any other questions they'd like to ask?
I don't have any questions. I just have statements. I mean, once again, I mean, it's important me look out for these citizens, an additional $3.50 increase on trash pickup. I'm not for that. I just think it's, I think they're in a contract, they need to go by their contract. I know they said they pick up more bulk items, but, you know, they pick up bulk items on request now and call them and say, hey, I've got this microwave out there, I need to might pick it up, and they do so. But I'm not in favor of raising the price of the trash pickup.
Yeah, they currently, based on their presentation, they pick up, just so everyone's, just a reminder, they pick up four cubic yard piles of yard debris. That would go from four to eight cubic yard piles, and then the number of bulk items currently accepted increases from five to 10. So you do get five items as it stands now. All right, were there any other questions or comments that anyone wanted to make? All right, I'll open the floor for a motion concerning the proposal by Ryland or an amendment to the proposal if you'd like to do that.
A motion not to approve.
Okay, so to deny.
To deny.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to deny and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm opposed. Okay, moving along. The resolution authorizing the submittal of the 2025 LMIG application for street resurfacing projects. Adam presented us a list. Is there an update on that list, Adam, or is everything still basically the same?
Um, it's basically the same, but just, um, just for the, on the understanding that it is not written and sold, so if there's some adjustments, if, say, we do get to the bid process and we see that, you know, our estimate's low, we make an add some more streets, or if our estimate's high, we may have to cut some, but it's not a strict, you have to do these, whatever. It's basically, when we're presenting this to the state to be able to get, receive those funds, we have to show them that we have need.
Right.
And that's what, that's basically what we're showing.
Okay.
And again, we use that street conditions index to look at the worst streets throughout the community, you know, citywide, and that's how we came up with that list.
Okay.
Keep it about $2 million on LMIG 2025, so that is.
Right, we want to kind of cap out at $2 million for this one. Previously, we were kind of there, and then we added some kind of projects together, and this past one is rather large.
Right.
But if you look, you know, previous to those, you know, the last probably three, two to three years, we're pretty well around that area, and which is kind of where we want to stay to keep improvements moving, but also have those funds available for other projects and things like that throughout the community as well.
I know that last year, we got that additional LMIG money from the governor.
That's right.
Which was a tremendous blessing.
That's right.
To all of the cities in Georgia, so we're hoping to receive that. Again, no confirmation on that yet, but we'll be at Cities United this coming weekend and be, you know, meeting with our legislators and everything, so we'll certainly encourage that ongoing funding. I think the state's in pretty good shape and can certainly, we could use their assistance again on that because that went a long way.
It did.
Okay, all right, so gentlemen, you've got that resolution in your packet and the proposed roads, which like Adam said, if we needed to move some things around, we certainly could. That total, to keep it under the $2 million, that Larry referenced is $1,972,700 estimate, so that does meet the $2 million threshold. Any questions or comments? I'll open the floor for a motion concerning that submittal of that application.
Motion for approval.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that carries. Thank you, Adam. All right, Hillary Culpepper, she's got the next two, so Hillary will take second Saturday first, and then we'll do Rhythm and Ribs, but as you know, Hillary works hard to bring special events to our downtown area, and our downtown boundaries have expanded in the past couple of years, so it's covering more and more and creating lots of good things going on. And Hillary came to the tourism meeting last week and presented her information. They were all very impressed. She's got some really cool tracking ways to verify that people are coming in from out of town. It's not just a guesstimate that we had so many out-of-town visitors, so I think they were quite impressed with that, but just wanted to give you a pat on the back for that, that hard work. But tell us about the second Saturday event.
Yeah, absolutely. So as you all are familiar with council, the second Saturday of every month, and we host Second Saturday in downtown, kind of in our district or our core district where all of the shopping and the restaurants are. Over the past two to three years, we have really seen this monthly event grow, and a few years ago, you all placed Second Saturday under the festival ordinance in order for that to be deemed as a sip and stroll to support our restaurants and stores such as Savor the Flavors, Donatello's, Don Julio's, that serve alcoholic beverages, so we will be able to take those drinks with us as we go and shop and mingle. And the proof is in the pudding at how that event and having Second Saturday apart, or the sip and stroll as a part of Second Saturday, has been very influential in supporting our downtown businesses. So in the packet that we submitted, you'll see the boundary map that that would entail, it's the same as last year's, so starting at 82 and then going up to 4th Street. And we cover that area because the Tifton Council for the Arts at the CED, they now are starting to host events in conjunction with Second Saturday, and so that way, if they ever wanted to have alcohol, you know, they could leave the CED and then meander down here to do some shopping as well. So you'll see that boundary area, and again, all of the merchants are starting to participate in Second Saturday. The attendees really enjoy the sip and stroll aspect of it.
Yeah, the merchants that I've spoken with have been very appreciative of the
Yes.
extra advertising, the extra traffic, the extra effort to, and they said they do, they do see that difference in their sales.
Yes, yes. And then to help clarify, anybody that does obtain an alcoholic beverage, of course, they are ID'd by the serving place. A wristband is placed on them, and then it's placed in our Think Tifton cup, so our police officers and first responders know that it's not just an open container, that it is being controlled in a defined area.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, you have in your packet the boundary area, which is, like Hillary said, is pretty traditional for the downtown district, main core district, from 4th Street to Highway 82 and then central over to Tifton. So I'll take a motion concerning the resolution for Second Saturday as a festival.
Moved to approve.
All right, thank you, sir.
Second.
So we have two seconds, so that's.
That's wonderful.
So we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we got that one. Now you want to talk about Rhythm and Ribs, which is right around the corner.
Absolutely, yes. So I'm just bringing remarks on behalf of Tifton Tourism in favor of the Rhythm and Ribs being designated as a festival, kind of the same as always, like we've done in the past. You'll see in your packet the boundary area for Rhythm and Ribs. So the event will begin that Friday, February the 28th, and will go into Saturday, March the 1st, looking at alcohol being sold and distributed that Friday from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and then Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Of course, same thing, wristbands, IDs will be checked, alcohol is placed in the Tifton Tourism, the Think Tifton cup, so the same as what Second Saturday uses to help our first responders know what is legitimate alcohol and what's not. But you'll see that the festival area is the entirety of the park, just kind of again, same as always, and this is a huge income for Tifton Tourism as well to help support the festival and the other events that they put on throughout the year.
Okay. All right, we're all familiar with that, that big event, so I'll open the floor up concerning designating Rhythm and Ribs as a festival.
Move to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Hillary. Larry, you want to put on your CFO hat and go over the financial report before you put on your city manager hat and go over the manager's report?
Yeah, you have, you have a detailed financial statement and a summary. I'll go with the summary, unless you have some questions on the detail. We're halfway through the year. We're looking good, other than we're missing the property tax revenue that we normally get in November and December, so total revenues through December is $6,588,088. And had we had that $4 million, we'd be right where we need to be, so.
Sure. We know it's coming, though.
Yeah, they're printing property tax bills today and tomorrow, and they should go out by the end of the week.
Okay.
So we should be getting that into February and March, so by the end of the first quarter, we should be back to where we should be, so we'll be good. On expenditures, total expenditures is $9,529,338, with net revenues, uh, under expenditures is, we're in the hole, $2,941,249. And as I say, once that property tax revenue comes in, that'll shore us up. Plus, we also have Georgia Power franchise tax and occupational taxes coming in in February and March, and that's another $1,007, so.
Right.
We'll be in good shape through the first quarter.
Sure.
On the enterprise funds, the water fund, total revenues $2,484,629, total expenditures $1,731,796, net revenues over expenditures $752,832. Sewer fund, total revenues $2,933,748, total expenditures $2,260,180, with net revenues over expenditures $673,567. Gas fund, total revenues $2,169,736, total expenditures $1,731,308, with net revenues over expenditures $438,454. And solid waste, total revenues $2,234,09, and total expenditures $2,065,533, with net revenues over expenditures $168,476. So like, we've been looking at, the solid waste fund is really running tight, and hopefully we can work out something with the service delivery committee and get something going where we can get that $2 tip and fee increase in there to help us out on that fund. But any questions?
Any questions, gentlemen? Y'all good? Okay. This doesn't really have anything to do with the budget, but it sort of does. I learned something quite interesting today that I was not aware of, and I'm going to call on Adam to share what he shared with me today. I did not know, just for information purposes only, our natural gas fund, you know, supplies a lot of our industry, supplies a lot of residences and that type thing, and when we get into a situation like we're getting into with the storm where there's going to be great demand potentially on natural gas, there are interruptible rates, and I didn't know if y'all were aware of that. I was not. So can you, in just a few minutes, you explained it so clearly when we spoke earlier today, what interruptible rates are and why that's so important that industries and that type be on an interruptible rate, in case you were to get a call or hear about that?
So there's several different rate structures within, within the gas area, and some of them, some of them based on kind of amount of usage, where, you know, the residential, there's kind of a residential rate, an ag rate, they get a little bit better rate because they're, you know, they use a lot more and that kind of stuff. But there's, there's on big, big contracts, there's a firm rate or an interruptible rate. The firm rate would be like, like, say, a Longhorn or something like that, where it's a business that they're always going to need gas because that's what they're using to cook and that kind of stuff, and they can't, they can't just shut the business down completely to, because they still need to operate. Where an interruptible is, is at, in situations like we're in now, they get a cheaper rate because they may have a backup system, diesel power generators to run boilers or something like that. And so they get a cheaper rate because we can call them and say, hey, we're fixing to get some really cold weather coming in, can you shut down for a period of time? And they, they're able to say, yes, we can, we can help curtail that heavy load by taking ours off of natural gas, which is going to run cheaper than propane or going to run cheaper than diesel, but they're willing to do that, but they also get a better rate at that. And I really want to thank our, the companies for being really good community partners, the hospital, they just, yes, sure, we'll absolutely, you know, shut down, tell me what times, and so we worked that out. Tifton Peanut, Tai Tai Peanut, they just said, you know, we won't run all week. Omega Gen, he said, we won't run Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, we'll call you Thursday, see if it's okay. Excavazza, which previously Tifton Aluminum, they said, yes, we will, we will drop down to, you know, what we can, we'll start shutting things off, and we'll run, we'll run some scheduled maintenance and things like that to try to curtail that as well. So a lot of good partners in that and, in doing that, so I'm very thankful that we, you know, they, they are there, but, you know, there's, there's the benefit on their side, where they get a much cheaper rate, so. But that's, that's kind of there because there is a point that we hit contract, and what, what that basically means is we're only allowed so much off of the line in one day, and because we have to share that with everybody else on that line. Southern Natural has Douglas Fitzgerald, Sylvester, Ashburn, other, other communities that, that are using that gas, and they need it as well, and if we go over our contract, then that means there's not enough for them to use.
Which is why we're wanting, another reason we're wanting to create potentially that consortium of communities that use that line, so.
Right. So that, that in itself is what helps us, and that, and that's why that interruptible's there, so just, just kind of wanted to explain that.
Well, thank you. I had not, I knew we had various rates based on usage and that kind of thing, but I'd not heard the interruptible rate, so I just, I wanted to share that. So thank you for.
No problem.
The amount of gas that you're allotted, then you pay basically a penalty.
Yeah, so we, we, as the city, would get penalized to the tune, and it's level, so if we go over, it could be $5 in MCF. It could be $25 in MCF according to what level we're on. I think we're on level two or three now, which is in that $10 to $25 range, and so not a big deal if we go over 100 MCF, but in weather like this, you're going to see thousands.
Yeah.
So if you went over, you know, you know, 3,000 MCF at $25, you're $7,500, and that's just going to come, you know, straight out of our gas fund, and we'll have to pay it. And the, the good news is you can, we can go back to the companies and say, you know, we asked you to come off, you didn't, or whatever, and so we're going to have to share the love a little bit, but we try to, we try to avoid that at all costs, and that's why, that's why it's good to have those good partners.
Right.
Explained about, you know, when we sold the tanks and the gas.
Oh, yeah, so, so, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm taking up some time, but it's.
It's interesting, it's important, yeah.
There is a, the city of Tifton used to have what's called a peak shaving plant, all right, and what that means is during peak times, usage times, they had a propane system that would shave off the amount of natural gas that we use. We would just pump some, some air and propane into the system, and that would, that would help keep us from pulling off that other system. Well, the system went down, it was several years. We, we don't see winters like this that much, so we've been fine, but the system went down, it was going to cost a couple million dollars to bring it back up to standard and get it where it was operational. Well, we looked at it and weighed out some options and decided it was probably best to sell the propane, sell the tanks, and have that money set aside, just kind of put it in a little fund that if we do wind up having to pay penalties, we've got money to draw on. I believe, and I don't have the numbers right, but I believe we're somewhere $272,080,000, somewhere in there that's kind of in a little bank, and truth is, luckily, we could probably pay some of these off of just the interest off of that money, but there's money set aside to be able to pay that, so we're not, we're not going to set ourselves up for failure.
Sure.
We've got ourselves set up for these disaster times with a little kind of nest egg that would help us out.
Right. And as gentlemen, as you know, the, the water fund, sewer fund, gas fund, and solid waste are enterprise funds that have to pay for themselves. The users pay for those services and, and pay for the, the materials, whether it's water or natural gas, whatever they're receiving, so those funds have to account for themselves. They can't go in the hole, we can't supplement them with general fund money and that kind of thing, so it's very important that that balance be maintained. Any other questions on your natural gas? There'll be a test at the end of the meeting. Thank you for that, Adam. Anything else, Rob, you can think of? That was a good question, too. Okay, thank you. Obviously, Adam knows his stuff when it comes to natural gas, so anytime you have questions, he's the man to call. All right, Larry, anything else on the financial report before you go into the city manager report?
Yeah, that's it, unless y'all have any questions.
I don't think so, I don't, I think we're good. Just got on manager's.
Well, we're, we're getting ready for the Arctic blast that's headed our way. We're closing the office, the offices tomorrow, the city offices, but we're expecting two to four inches of snow on the ground, so we want everybody to be safe and not onto the roads. Police, fire, and public works will be reporting for duty. I think Adam's going to be monitoring all night long, so he, he brought his pillow with him today, so. So they'll, I think they've got two dump truck loads of sand and like 400 pounds of salt for the roads to try to keep them safe. I think DOT has six snow plows for the South Georgia. I don't know if one will be available for Tifton or not, but I guess Adam can try to wrestle one of them away from him if we need it, so, but it possibly could be available. Let's see, the fire department got their new burn training facility in last week, and they trained out there on Monday and Tuesday, and they're real excited about that. The county trained with them, so it was a nice experience to see them get in that fire, a real fire, and do some training. Let's see, we had another fire at the landfill, one of the Packer caught on fires, and we had to put it out, but it should be back up and running by the end of the week, they said had to have some repairs. Events coming up, we got Second Saturday in February coming up, and then the theater, we have Johnny Cash coming to town February 8th also, and then Tifton's Masked Singer is February 15th. As far as projects, we got LMIG 2024 going, where we'll be paving 46 streets, so we should be starting on that before long here. I think there's three streets that we have to repair some water mains, so once that's done, then we can start the paving. We're also starting the 18th Street, those five bridges there that we'll be replacing on that, we'll be accepting bids on that over the next few weeks to get that going. We're working on the theater, the roof needs to be repaired, and there's some repairs that we need to do in the basement, basement leaking with water and various issues there to get it back up in good shape. The lead service inventory, I met with the ESE engineers, and we're trying to get that done by October of this year. If we get it done by then, we won't have to send letters out again to, to the citizens that were working on lead service, so we're trying to get that done, so that's pretty much it. Unless anybody has any questions.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen? All right. We'll wrap up with mayor and council comments, and then we do need to go into executive session just for a few minutes following this meeting for personnel reasons. So does anybody, would anybody like to go first with your comments?
Well.
Sure, yeah, so we'll go for personnel and legal, absolutely. Any comments, gentlemen?
Say everybody be safe.
Absolutely.
Stay warm, and they do have warming shelters out and available at the Tifton County Recreation Department.
Exactly.
So keep folks in mind that are not as fortunate as you are, so.
And I know Caroline's been doing a really good job of putting any information that comes out to the city, whether it's from Georgia Power, the EMC, the county on the warming shelters, the Red Cross, anybody that's on our social media. So if you're not sure, go follow the City of Tifton Facebook page, and she does a really good job of getting that information out. And then please share that with all of your friends and Facebook and social media contacts. Any other comments, gentlemen?
Just as far as the warming station at the rec department, I talked to Tim and said the only food that they can receive has to be non-perishable items or packaged item already. They can't accept sandwiches or soups or anything like that. So if any of the churches want to donate anything, it just needs to have those criterias of non-perishable and packaged already.
Exactly, and I think they said too, to bring blankets and things like that. They're just very limited in what they have. Any other comments, and I'll wrap things up before we, do you have some questions?
No, just everybody stay safe, stay warm, stay off the roads of all possible.
Yep, good advice, absolutely. I'll wrap things up, and then I'll need that motion for executive session for legal and personnel. But just wanted to share with you all, I had the opportunity, I got a call a couple of weeks ago from Senator John Ossoff inviting me and the guest of my choice to be his guest at the inauguration, which was something that was incredibly amazing to me. I couldn't even speak for two or three minutes. All I could do was just jab, you know, just kind of jab, or I said, I'm at a loss for words, and that usually doesn't happen. But I was so thrilled to be able to be invited, just to be invited and thought about in that manner. And the relationships that we build, and I'm gonna give the Georgia Municipal Association a lot of this credit for being able to work through that program and chair our federal and our state legislative committees. We develop these relationships, and you never know where those relationships are going to end up. If you recall, a couple of years ago, Senator Ossoff came down and looked at Tifton right as we were starting our urban redevelopment program and the authority and the dreams and the visions that we had, and he's been very, very supportive. When everything got canceled and moved indoors and I decided not to go because I wasn't gonna go, if I couldn't go to the event that I had been invited to, I did send him a text and just said, thank you so much for thinking about Tifton and recognizing Tifton in this way, but I'd love for you to come back and see our next project. We've got a new project that we're working on with our URA, our Urban Redevelopment Authority, and our DDA. I'm not gonna get into the details of that now. That will be forthcoming. But I know that we'll have his support as we begin to move our urban redevelopment boundaries eastward in South Tifton, crossing over Central towards Main and all that, that new project, whatever that becomes, will entail. So I'm really excited about that and those relationships. And like I said, we'll be at Cities United this weekend, which is also a GMA function where it's a legislative-type meeting where we meet with our legislators and encourage them to support our community and tell them what we have going on and what our projects are and how we need their help. If the communities in Georgia are strong, then Georgia's a strong state, and it makes us all better. So I was thrilled to, to be able to get that invitation and really saddened when I didn't get to go. But I do want to invite everybody, speaking of legislation, many of you have heard about House Bill 581. I know it's been a topic of the school board with what's gonna happen with school property taxes and opting in or opting out and that kind of thing. We were supposed to have a joint meeting with the Ta Ta, Omega, Tifton, and city councils, and then the Tifton County Commission last week to discuss 581. The county manager unfortunately got sick the day of the meeting, so they canceled, but we, it's been rescheduled. It is going to be on January the 30th at 6:00 PM at the 911 Center, Emergency Center on 2nd Street. This is a very important topic. This is the one that talks about capping your homestead, or your, your property taxes and a floating homestead exemption. It's very, a very intricate, detailed bill that's very confusing. But we've got to, we've got to work through this and make sure that we're all doing what's best for you, the citizens and business and property owners in this community. So if you can go to the meeting, I encourage you to do so. Being at the 911 Center, I don't know that it will be recorded or not. I kind of feel probably not. I know all of our meetings are recorded and put on our, either our city website or on YouTube, but I'm not sure about that meeting. So, so let everybody know, we do have a March 1st deadline that the cities and counties have to submit what we're going to do back to the state. So time is of the essence, so, so we're kind of backed in a corner time-wise. But, but we're gonna just know, you have the assurance of this council that we're gonna do everything possible to make sure that your property taxes remain reasonable and, and do everything we can to make that happen. Work does continue to go on with our city manager search. We don't have any announcements to make at this time I wanted to give, and I know the council join's been giving you, Larry, a huge pat on the back for continuing to take on this responsibility and to Jessica as our interims in this role. So you've done a great job, both of you, in making sure everything stays on track, and, and we're very thankful to you for that. But like these gentlemen said, make sure that your phones are charged tonight. We may lose power over the next little bit if we get a lot of ice. Make sure your weather radios are working. You've got batteries in those. Keep your water dripping, like, like Josh said, stay off the roadways. If you have any, any issues, please call 911. There's no point to try to ride something out by yourself if you get into, into a tight. Be sure, like y'all said, bring your pets indoors, check on your families and neighbors, so we appreciate that. But thank you all for being here, and now I will take a motion concerning going into executive session for legal and personnel.
Make a motion.
Okay, thank you. Then we have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll take about a two-minute break and.